Hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight. Brian Roddemaker and Planning Director Stevens Braker were our greeters this evening. Brian is our Economic Development Director. And this is the December 6th, 2022 Ormond Beach City Commission Meeting, the first regular meeting in December. And I will call the meeting to order, and I'm going to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. We have a whole new crowd tonight, and we're excited about that. First off, to my right, your left is Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, City Clerk Susan Daederich, our Commissioner from Zone 1, Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Commissioner from Zone 2, Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left and your right, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone 3.
Happy Holidays, everyone.
Our Deputy Mayor and Zone 4 Commissioner Harold Brierley.
Good evening, everyone.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, if you have a cellphone, please double-check it, make sure it's silenced, and we will rise for the invocation given by Deacon Maline from the Church of the Holy Child, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, you call us from our various walks of life and with our many gifts to care for your creation, most especially your people. We ask your blessings on each of us tonight and on the work of this commission. May its deliberations be peaceful, productive, and judicious, and may their outcome give life and joy to this community. May all decisions be filled with charity and compassion. May each of us here be enriched by our labors and follow you more closely in our lives. We ask this all in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have audience remarks and hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak. And we start with Brian Rogerson.
Good evening. Hi, Brian Rogerson. Nice to meet you all. Glad to represent the Easy Does It Club of Dallas Street. Our mission statement is to help those people that are sick and suffering, and offer all the drugs and treatment they want and need, and to help them change. To help them change their lives and become better. It's been a miracle that a lot of the society problems I've thought we shared with you, come and walk in there, and run young kids in their neighborhood, people from all kinds of ways, you know, and then when they're available, they'll all be along the same party night. So we really appreciate that. Unless somebody else's people have a gift, I'd like to get up to much of them with ideas here and ask people to help.
Thank you. Next is John McKernan.
Good evening. My name is John McKernan. I'm a resident of Ormond Beach. And like Mr. Rogers saying, I'm a member of the Easy Does It Club. We're here with several of our members. Some of us comprise the New Board of Directors. We've recently purchased the building from the private individuals, so we're a new board. And our main purpose here tonight is to say hello, introduce ourselves, let you know that we want to work with the city. We have some requests coming up that we could talk to you about and basically say hi and know that we're members of the community and we wish to continue to help the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Corey Romanek.
My name is Corey Romanek. I'm the chairman of the board. We recently did some research regarding parking situations that we had on the property. I know that there was a violation a few years ago where a couple of exalians, members of the club, must also rally in front of the club in the public right of the city of Ormond Beach. I know that Chris Mason had written a couple letters in previous time. And I guess there was a delinquency response to them. So then he turned, came out, tore a lot of it out, put no parking signs all across the street from clearly under the park, but it was still a park. Being that we're the new board and new owners of the property, and we're now the new taxpayers of the property, we'd like to request that we can try to get some of that parking back and willing to work with the city in whatever way we can to help create 10 to 15 more parking spots. We're busting at the seams. We're trying everything we can by parking down the street. We don't want to park in front of people's homes in the city east, which we could legally do. We don't want to do that to people. And we're trying to keep it down in our part of that neighborhood. So Mr. Mason came out and took some soundage, and we told him that he would come up here and discuss ourselves to see if it pays to be helped with a lot of people. There are a lot of people that are desperate, desire, and needs that we try to fulfill and help those guys to become reestablished in the community and to not draw on the resources that could possibly cause taxpayer issues. So what we're asking for is to have a comprehensive conversation to help us address in that parking area that at one time that we did have that to move from us because of some other factors. So we're here to ask for some help. I've got Mr. Sargent's business card. I know he's not saying, "Commissioner." We can have, hopefully, a meeting with him and discuss our issues. And hopefully, we can get to a point where we're able to help more people to legally do so without any kind of violation of the property. I wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we're a house and what we're trying to do and what happened here. And we know that we provide valuable services that the city cannot buy. We offer good people what they want.
Thank you. Donna Martin.
It's a miracle that I'm standing up here and I'm addressing the Ormond Town Hall, Little. I am a member also of the Easy Does It Club. And I just wanted to say thank you. The agenda that was given, that was addressed, what I want to say, I just want to let you know that I'm a recovering alcoholic and this building has meant a lot to me. And we've been in Ormond, I mean, I even voted. So this is a success story for somebody such as I. So it's such a privilege to sit here, stand here, and talk to you. And thank you for the opening, because I think that said it all with the power of how we do here in this community. It is an awesome town. And so I decided to really get in and to be a part of it. So I'm very honored to be here tonight to speak in front of you. And I hope that you can hear what we have to share about what our needs need to be met. So thank you.
Raymond Guevigan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just a member there at the Easy Does It Club. But I just, most of the time, we keep our work anonymous. And, you know, we don't do it in the public eye and all that stuff. We don't draw on government funding for any of the work that we do and all that. We support ourselves with our reference and all this stuff. But every once in a while, we need help from folks like you to meet the city ordinances and all that stuff like that. And that's all we're asking for, is to give us a hand so we could be more used to the other citizens that, you know, for whatever reasons, a lot of other places can't reach you now. Help that we're able to, you know, for reasons, we're able to reach out and help them. You know, again, at no cost to the government. Do we do this all our time? You know, it's always voluntary and all that. So we just ask people, you know, have a decent discourse and, you know, a little bit of help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Williams.
Good evening, and I'm so happy to see you all and new people on the commission. I am here to represent a group that Bill Denny and I started, and it's called Civil Discourse. We've extended it to common ground. And we've been not really, during COVID and all, we did some meetings, you know, online. But so we feel like we're kind of restarting now, and we'd like your support. Our next meeting is this Monday, the 12th of December. And we meet at the library at 5:30. Travis, my Zone 2 representative, has agreed to come. He can come the first part of the meeting. He has already made another commitment. But this is kind of a reorganizational meeting, and we'd like your help. Because we want this to be a very useful tool for you all and for the community, to come together and collaborate over issues. And we understand that we've come to the game late on some issues. So we want your help in, you know, pulling up the issues before it's too late and getting the word out to citizens and getting their feedback and their input. This is a nice way to give input. But what we're wanting is to have a collaborative relationship with the city, the county, and all those that affect our well-being as citizens. So we'd like for you to help us with our structure. This will be the last meeting before the holidays, and then we'll come on full force afterwards. And we'll decide, you know, when, how, and all that. And I am very interested, I'm a licensed clinical social worker, in my part in bringing people together. I think I can do that. Before, for Civil Discourse, we've spoken, and people had a certain amount of time. And I would, you know, we would say, "Time's up," and wouldn't let people talk over each other. But now we want to go another step and see if we can come up with win-win solutions for both sides of an issue. We, as human beings, for too long have been win-lose situations with each other. So we want to come up with win-win solutions. And we appreciate your support and help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Eget.
Hello. I'm Cheryl Eget. I'm an Ormond Beach resident. I am one of several neighborhood residents that have called in numerous complaints about constantly loose aggressive dogs from 31 Putnam Avenue. This has been going on for several years. I have called several times. I had to file an official complaint this year, earlier this year, when one of the dogs aggressively chased me several houses down the street while I was walking down that street. Fortunately, I was able to protect myself from being attacked by getting behind a bush. I'm not the only one to file an official complaint against this household. There are also pending lawsuits against this household and owners of the dogs. They have aggressively chased several people. Someone has been bitten, and two dogs were recently attacked and mauled on a nearby street while walking with their owners on a leash and one of the dogs died. Even after all these complaints, it took a dog to die for these aggressive dogs at this household to finally be put down. Why was nothing done earlier? There have been numerous complaints, and we are terrified to walk down our streets. These dog owners should never allow to own dogs again. They have consistently shown irresponsible ownership of dogs with no regard for the safety of their neighbors, and it brought harm to our neighborhood. What can be done about this? Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Valerio.
My name is Joe Valerio. I live at 1213 North Side Drive. First, I want to congratulate all the new members and re-elected members of the commission, in particular, my own Commissioner Lori Tolland. Win or lose, I consider it a privilege to actually run for the city that is a beautiful city. However, there are still many issues that I'm part of my campaign that I'm still concerned about, like flooding due to water runoff, traffic conditions within the city, a lack of urgent care center on the beachside, the risk to wetlands and waterways. I like the idea of incorporating wetlands into designing new neighborhoods. I think the police and fire department are underpaid. And I am afraid of the Avalon Park extension. I consider that a threat to our city. But I'm not talking about anything today. I'm going to talk about something else. I've been made aware of the aviation fuel vending on Sound Approach, Ormond Beach, in areas of Pine Trails, Creekside, Ormond Green. A lot of people have been complaining about finding fuel residue on the roofs of the houses, on their cars, on their animals. I can't say whether it's aviation gas or it's jet fuel. I'm not sure about that. But I want to make you guys aware of that, because I think it's not fair to those people that they have to put up with that. Now, obviously, there are a lot of vent fuel that get under the maximum takeoff landing weight at the airport. But they have to be high enough altitude where it's atomized before it gets down to that level. But somebody is not doing that. And it's been going repeatedly. So I think that somebody here, maybe talk with the FAA, something to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Robert Higley.
Good evening. My name is Robert Higley. I live on Putnam Avenue here. I'd like to expand on that issue with the loose dogs. Mostly, they're pit bulls. And this particular household is a cross street for me. And I've got handful of people, neighbors, that can show their hands there. We're fed up with it. I've been there 13 years, and it's just been one episode after the other, weekly, monthly, whether it's criminal, whether it's code enforcement, or their yard and house looks like a landfill. It's horrible. We've got a great neighborhood. And we got kids, you know, we got dogs and animals. And, you know, to have to pack a handgun to walk your kid or your dog outside is just horrible. It's unsettling, and it shouldn't happen. Middle of August, the guy got his knee mauled. I got pictures on Beach Street. And I was trying to get the dogs away from him, and they came and attacked me again. And the cops didn't do much about it. And he's got a pending lawsuit right now. And we'll see where that goes. But other than that, it's just a horrible situation, ongoing. We don't see a lot of police presence. We have lately, thank God. And he was just incarcerated. That's a father and son only. But they have so much traffic in and out of this house. I suspect there's drugs there. You know, they mow the yard at night with flashlights. They're just up all night, every night. And the father, I sort of feel sorry for him. He doesn't want to be in this situation. He's voiced that to the neighbors, that, hey, I'm afraid of my son. And sons aren't wanted in other states, but they won't extradite him or get him back there for the crimes. I don't know if y'all are aware of this household or not. It's 31 Putnam. But if you could look into it. And now, there's three or four Saturdays ago, these dogs got loose again, and they mauled two dogs out of an older couple, and they're here, out of an older couple's arms, you know? Knocked the older people over. And these pit bulls are shredding their animals, you know? Animals are family members, you know? So that's about all I got.
Thank you. Kathy Seibert.
Hi, I'm here to speak also on the dogs. My name's Kathy Seibert. I'm a bereavement counselor for Gentiva Hospice. I'm familiar with death when it comes to the gentle ending of a life. The horrific dog attack that I personally witnessed on Cumberland Avenue on Saturday, November 19th, resulted in the death of one poodle, Snooki, and severe injuries to his brother Boots. As you might imagine, the attack by the two pit bulls was far beyond what I normally deal with in my vocation. And the vision of what I saw, I cannot get out of my mind. I cannot even begin to understand what Monique and Ken are going through as they fought so valiantly at great risk to their own physical harm to free their fur babies from the jaws of Penelope and Oliver. There are obviously many neighbors here to support Ken and Monique as we start a conversation with you to help us change the code regarding families who are irresponsible dog owners. The house in question, as has already been noted, has been cited multiple times over many years for having their dogs escape and create fear on Putnam, Cumberland, Beach, and probably other streets in the Ormond Terrace area. The dogs have bitten people and now killed Snooki. Yet they continue to be allowed to own dogs, and they take no responsibility in training or containing them. The day of the attack, I personally witnessed the dogs easily jump over the three-foot fence to go into their own backyard after they had done the attack on Snooki and Boots. Now, Section 5-78 of Code Enforcement pertains to dangerous dogs. Parts 1A, B, and C, all can be confirmed by the police. At what point do we get to feel safe in our neighborhood again? I don't even walk down Putnam anymore. And I'm now afraid to walk down Cumberland, because that's the street that the dogs were killed on. So how many incidents does it take? Two, three, four? I mean, at this point, we're talking years. The family has created such an atmosphere that we feel that, as has already been noted, they shouldn't be allowed to own dogs anymore. I currently walk my own dog carrying a wooden bat for protection because of my fear and my PTSD. And it breaks my heart that now three dogs are dead, Snooki, Penelope, and Oliver. In the Online Sunshine 2022 Florida statutes, Chapter 767.14, it gives local government authorization to create local restrictions. I hope that we can join forces and address this so that I can do my three-mile walk in the morning without having to take a bat with me for protection. I grew up here. Ormond is my home, and I love my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Vivian Massey.
Hello, good evening. My name is Vivian Massey. I also live on Cumberland Avenue. I'm fortunate that I can say I did not witness with my eyes the attack of September the 19th. However, I heard it, and I saw its aftermath. And it was horrible. And this is on the heels of my husband and I making multiple calls to the Police Department, Animal Control, as well as the city, because our backyard, or part of our backyard, is a butt to the house on 31 Cumberland Avenue. We've called about our concerns about the welfare of their dogs, for one, because they don't necessarily look like they're well taken care of. The safety of our own dogs. And then I have, we have an eight-year-old and two six-year-olds. And at one point, we realized that the integrity of the fence was probably not good. So the city comes out. And it's disappointing to know that every person that I spoke to from the Police Department or the city have said, "Oh, yeah, we know these people. We know these people. We get calls about them all the time. We have a file, you know, this long about them." But they still own dogs, these two dogs, attacked and killed another dog on our street. And it's upsetting. I felt sick to my stomach the whole weekend just thinking about it and reliving it and wondering what in the world Ken and Monique must have been feeling to have this happen to their, you know, beloved dog. And I realized that the reason I felt so sick about it is because what if it had been one of my kids? Is that what it's going to take for these people to never be allowed to own a dog again? Because Kathy's right. We watched them easily jump over the fence, the part of the fence that's actually in my next-door neighbor's yard, back into their own homes like nothing, you know, these dogs that were now covered in another dog's blood. You know, and I just, you know, we're here to say, obviously, to support our neighbors. And, you know, we don't want to live in fear on our own street. But also to say that we support any new policy or changes to existing policy that will not allow these people to own dogs anymore or other people, you know, irresponsible dog owners like them. There needs to be some sort of, something in place that we can keep this from happening ever again. Because there was a lot of stuff that could have put a stop to it before it happened. Now that it has happened, I hope that it's gotten the attention of enough people that something will now be put into place and enforced. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Doyle Lewis.
How are you? I'm kind of soaked up because I didn't speak. Today, I live in Ormond Beach. Tomorrow, I might not. Tomorrow, I might live in Daytona Beach. And then I might not there. I've been studying human nature almost every day of my life. It's just something you have to deal with. My biggest concern tonight, believe it or not, coincides with dogs that are loose. You ever ride a bicycle when a dog is running after you? I have. Something needs to be done with those dogs. But that wasn't on my list. That's number four. The other things are more important, because I enjoy life. I keep mean people away from me. I learned to do that to survive. My biggest concern tonight, believe it or not, so I can enjoy the beach, enjoy the outdoors, is bicycles, especially electric bicycles that are being stolen in neighborhoods, because a lot of them are being sold. If there's a loose dog, it's going to take after that bicycle. We need to make sure that the electric bicycles have places to park, especially the ones with the bigger tires, because they ride on the beach. A lot of older people actually are getting into them again because they're easy to ride. Oh, I'm over that in 60 seconds. Okay, next one. Showers on the beach, bathrooms on the beach. Got to get the plumbing fixed. Years ago, they put the bathroom showers and the mortar faucets on the beach. Guess what happened when the sand left? So did the showers, the plumbing problems. All the sand goes into cars, into the buses, into everything else. They can't even wipe their feet. Whoever decided to put those showers on the beach in the sand should have invested in speaking a lot more like I do. Because you can easily put that on the sea wall. A little bit farther off the beach, so all that damage doesn't work. My name is Doyle Lewis. And I stay away from mean people because of one reason. I'm an architect builder, and I've been at it for over 40 years. I stay away from mean people. You know how I do that? Every day, I sleep somewhere else.
Thank you, Doyle. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? These are the minutes from the City Commission Meeting of November 1st, 2022, and also from the City Commission Meeting of November 15th, 2022. I need one motion to approve both.
I move approval of the minutes from City Commission Meeting, November 1st and then November 15th of 2022.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show those passed unanimously. Item number six is a Community Redevelopment Agency item, A and B. The City Commission in Ormond Beach serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the City Commission Meeting and now call the CRA meeting to order. As Chairman of the CRA, I will open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read 6A by title, please.
Resolution number 2022-158. A resolution of the City Commission, also acting as a Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a bid from PNS Paving, Inc. for construction services regarding the Grenada Boulevard streetscape banding repair project under bid number 2022-19, authorizing the execution of a contract and payment, therefore rejecting all other bids and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-158, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask our Public Works Director from the city of Ormond Beach, Sean Finley, to speak on this item.
to date of what we're doing here with this, with this project. It's one that has been, had the cooperation from Main Street to help us get to this point. We've worked real hard, and we're hoping that we end up with a good project after we've got our set in mind. This map, and I know it's a little bit hard to read, is an overview of the area that we're dealing with. We're working through the entire downtown, so we've got our three districts, Ocean, the River, and the Creek District. We put it out to bid in a manner, to kind of test the waters here a little bit, we put it out as a base bid, which encompassed the main downtown as its primary bid. We also put two alternates with the beachside and then that area west of US1, that was an alternate as well. We did that to, not knowing what we're going to, what kind of bids we were going to get this time around. We've seen a lot of escalation of prices, so we wanted to make sure that we were able to do a project that fell within our budgets here and was one that was, we could represent the city well. As you see, and it may be hard to see, and maybe you'll see on your monitors, there are some, the yellow lines, the yellow highlighting represents the area where we're doing the work, and it goes a little bit more to the south of Granada Boulevard, so there is some work that is in those approached streets. Right now, this is the area where we've got the banding currently with the pavement banding. We've got existing issues out there, and these have developed over the years. This product was originally done in the 1990s, it's, it's where, it's not how we would necessarily do projects these days. The pavers were set in sand, they weren't concreted in, so we've got pavement collapse. We've also got areas where we had street trees where the parades were. We're going to replace those areas and make it a little bit more uniform, trying to keep a good flow throughout the town, the downtown. So here's what we're, the bold points of what we're doing with this project, we're going to remove the existing pavers and install the selective banding type. We're going to remove planted areas by the road and reach the sidewalk width. That's been one of the big problems we've had in the downtown, is having a good width to have a good walk rule area. We're going to remove and replace broken and patched sidewalk, those were those street pre-areas. And we're going to pressure wash everything that otherwise isn't replaced. After, after a lengthy process, we did some test patterns there on Washington Avenue. This was the one that was recommended by Main Street. This was the pattern that was recommended by the previous commission to go forward with this Etruscan tile. It is a concrete, it's a colored concrete with an aggregate mixed into it, a coquina-like aggregate in there to kind of give it that effect. And then, you know, we're recommending awarding the entire bid, the base bid plus the two alternates, for a total of $2.818,000. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Sean. Do you have one card from Dorian Burt? And then if the Commission has any questions for Sean, you can ask them at that point.
Good evening. First, let me say, oh my gosh, it's great to see you all up there. And the lighted trees, the palm trees look amazing, amazing. 203 Pine Cone Trail. I am here on behalf of the Highlander Corp., and I'm a member of the Design Committee, and I really urge your support for this banding project, which really has a lot of safety built into it. We have gone over at this project for almost two years with Main Street and participation of everyone that wanted to put in their opinions on the colors. It needs to be done. It is dangerous. Highlander Corp. owns a lot of buildings on Granada, and every day, people mention the unevenness where the patches have gone in. So I urge your support in this. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we go to the Community Redevelopment Agency. And Commissioners, any questions for Sean, or anyone want to start the discussion on 6A? Commissioner Persis.
Yes, no, I was here when this all started, and I know, and I know we have talked about improving our Main Street area and making Ormond Beach look great, and I think the safety issue is what really calls to me, because there is a huge safety issue with some of the areas on the sidewalks. I've actually tripped myself a couple of times in those areas. I think it's going to make our downtown look fabulous and our whole Main Street, that's kind of in our plans that we've talked about, making Ormond Beach look really great. And I know Ormond, Main Street, and they've all done so much research and worked so hard on this project. Again, I just think it's something that we really, really need to do, because it's not going to get better.
Deputy Mayor Breiling.
I will concur and echo Commissioner Persis's comments. I can remember when we did the first street scape, 35 years ago, I guess, I think it was like mid-'80s, and I think, you know, Mr. Finley's right, that a lot of those pavers were set in sand, they weren't set in, and over time, they've collapsed. I do, I will, I would like to say that I do like the banding that you all chose over the paper brick, over the brick-paver look, because, you know, we are kind of a beachy town, and I think it kind of has a beachy look, so that's all I have to think.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sargent.
I just have a couple of questions. Does this include the crosswalk areas?
We are, I don't believe that we're not remedying the crosswalk areas.
So the pavers in the crosswalks and in the road are going to stay the way they are now?
Correct.
Okay. What is going to be done with the pavers that are being pulled up? Can we donate those to First Step Shelter, or someone that might be able to use them, to repurpose them?
I don't believe that we specified that we wanted them back, but I'll look at it as if there is a way that we can get them back and utilize them, I'm sure we will definitely do that.
My last one that just really sticks out to me is, we have 17 trash receptacles for a price tag of $4,100 a piece, so we have almost $70,000 for trash cans. I just, it's giving me heartburn.
I've got another two slides if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Just to kind of show you, we spent a lot of time showing what the, what the banding is going to be like, look like. These are the trash receptacles, as well as the benches, that we are proposing, that were specified with this. On the surface, $4,100 is quite a bit for a trash receptacle, $4,500 is a lot for a bench. You know, I don't want to sound like I'm feeding a lion here, that these are a whole other level of trash cans and benches, but they are sturdy, they are a public use facility. They're, you know, they are built to last, they are built to meet those standards. One of the things that we have to do when we put in facilities, you know, not just on our, you know, we have to put features on our facilities to one level. When we're working in the DOT right-of-way, we have to take it to another level and have products that would be approved by DOT. You know, you mentioned 17 receptacles, there's four benches. You know, I put this on here just to kind of illustrate a little bit that the price, we received bids from three contractors, PNS Paving, Coleman Goodman, AM Weigle. Any one of those contractors, I would have had no reservation in using. They're all very good quality. Coleman and Goodman and AM Weigle, we've recently added those to our, or renewed those, either added them with Coleman Goodman or renewed their license for our construction manager risk contractors. PNS Paving has a lot of experience working in DOT right-of-way. Any one of them would have been consistent. As you can see, their prices, we're all of the same magnitude for those. To order those on our own probably would be $2,000. One of the things that I'm, the reason why I put those prices up there is to highlight, PNS, even though their bench and their receptacles are the highest, their overall bid is the lowest, and there's, and sometimes, it's where a contractor puts their property. And, you know, Coleman Goodman, AM Weigle were a little bit less, because they're more site contractor, where PNS is more of a roadway contractor. They likely have to hire someone, a subcontractor, to put those in. The ultimate, the ultimate project is the bottom line. And as you see with PNS Paving, we got a bottom line that was nearly a million dollars less than the next two receptive bidders. So, you know, I realize it's a very big price, but for the quality of the materials that we need to specify to meet the DOT requirements, to meet our own requirements, that's unfortunately the price difference.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes, I think, I think the safety was a big factor for me as well, and I really was shocked that it was back in the '90s that we did this banding, it seemed like yesterday. I think also the banding will bring together all the districts, you know, from beachside all the way down to the creek, so I'm really happy about that. That is, you know, that is our highlight of our city, is that downtown Main Street area. And I would actually just take it one step further for consideration when we have a discussion about Casin Park. It might be nice to include that type of design or coquina somewhere in the park as well, since it'll butt, it'll make it a little bit continuous, you know, in the whole, in the whole city. And just a comment to you, Travis, working with Robert Caroline and Leisure Services and doing Vedner Park, I too was shocked at the cost of benches and trash cans, but their quality is much more elevated, and it does make sense. So I'm just validating what you said. Mr. Finley.
Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, and I, and Commissioner Sargent, I just wanted to maybe make you feel a little better, to piggyback on what Commissioner Tolland just said, as a former school principal having to order benches and trash receptacles on campuses, they are very pricey, but if you get a good one, they last for years and years and years. So that, that I know is what we're getting for the city.
Commissioner Breiling.
Sean, how old are the current trash receptacles we have out there now?
I believe that we put them in in 2008 when we did the...
For about 14 years.
About 14.
Because they look very similar to the ones that you would be ordering this time. I'm just looking at the one here on the picture. It looks very, very much like that.
Correct. You know, we're not, we're not looking for anything too exotic here. We're looking for, you know, a very classic look, I think that we took, and try to have something that's...
And I guess that's something that DOT has to approve to be in there right-of-way.
As we go through their approval process, they don't want to make sure that they see it.
Great. Thank you, Sean. I just need, unless there's any other discussion, need a motion from the CRA board recommending that we either approve or deny this, or that the Commission either approve or deny this.
I would like to move that we accept resolution number 2022-158.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to accept, I guess, and recommend, is that what you're saying, Commissioner Tolland, to the Ormond Beach City Commission approval of 6A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously. 6B.
Resolution number 2022-159. A resolution of the City Commission, also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting the proposal of Zev Cohen Associates, Inc. regarding professional engineering services for the Casin Park redesign project, authorizing the execution of an agreement and payment therefore, rejecting all other proposals and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-159, read by title only.
Thank you, and again, I'll ask Public Works Director Sean Finley to give us a brief synopsis on this item.
Thank you. This is a very important project, and I think that we, really gave us a chart that just wanted to elevate it to a whole nother level, and that's why we're proud to bring this to you tonight. We received some workshop last summer, last spring, we went through a lengthy process where we wanted to get the community involved. We took it to our, we took it to the community, we took it to the Commission to get their feeling of what was important about Casin Park, what we wanted to see, and I think the chart was given to us that we want to, we want the next generation of this park, we want something that's going to last this for 50, next 50 years. We presented four options, we received one from the community as well. Commissioners liked what was in it, what was in option one and four. Another important stakeholder in this one is Mr. Leary, who's sitting behind me this evening. Mr. Leary prefers option one, it has a lot of the features. You know, option one and four are very similar, but they have some different elements when incorporated to our project. We had three, three design firms, all very, all very good design firms, submit proposals to us for this project. We wanted to look at them, and we looked at them in the manner that we did with the design. We did look at them, at the quality of their, of their previous work, and what they can do to this project. These are all, all three of these firms were ones that have done work for us previously, and that, the ranking is, the score is correct, the ranking is incorrect there. Correct, and we're being successful with this previously in Casin Park with the breakwater policies. Inc. is here a local firm, they've worked us on, with us on engine projects, and Zev Cohen Associates is a local firm as well. They've worked with us on many other projects. They worked on us with Andy Ramon on Detroit Park, they've worked on us numerous times. All three of them gave presentations, presented to us proposals that we would be proud to work with any of them. Zev Cohen's just rose a little bit higher than what they were giving us and what they're thinking out of the box. They did two concepts, you know, to kind of give us a little view of what they're seeing. One of the things that's important to note with this project is, we're going to work with Zev Cohen to come up with a project that utilizes all that hard work that we've done. All that information that we've, that we receive is going to go into what's going to be one more concept plan. And we're going to try to work in those things that meet the requests of the Commission, meet the request of the Leadership Services Advisory Board, meet the request of Main Street, meet the request of Mr. Leary, meet the request of everyone, and get one, and the rest is what, obviously, we're not going to be able to fit every single thing in there, but we want something that represents the general tone of a local firm. So these are, these are both steps in the right direction, they're not, they're not there yet. And so, one, one last step before they go to final engineering design, before they go to bid documents, is we're going to bring you another, another concept and get you to sign off on it, and get you to, you know, presented, we'll present to our constituents again, and let them know this is where we're going, and we'll make sure that we get it right, because we want to get this right the, you know, one time. That's where we're at. And Zev Cohen Associates is here as well. I've known Dwight for a long time, and I know that, you know, he is a very proud member of this community, and that's one of the reasons why we get to have Cohen in, is involved, not just the quality of their work as a professional firm, but their commitment to this, and so, you know, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean or Dwight?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I wasn't on the Commission when you all discussed this originally, but I am probably much like Mr., much, much like, much like Ike. I like, you know, I liked the original concept one, that's the one that kind of appeals more to me. It's more of keeping on kind of what's there. I never really saw a huge need to redesign the park, but I do like, but I do also realize that we need to combine the restrooms and the bait house, so we get that bait shop away, you know, further away from the river, so it doesn't flood, so that's all.
Commissioner Sargent.
One thing that sticks out for me that I just do not like is the playground in this location, and where you look at it, with the rocks, the river rats that live in these rocks, the dangerous, it just, the safety issue for that, I just don't think that we need a park for children at this location. And I also would like to see, the memorial is at the bottom of the park, I'm looking at concept one, I think, and I think that memorial should be a centerpiece with the flag and everything closer to where the bait shop is located, or of a focal point that put in where no one's going to be able to see it. We will take all this focus and consider it.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. If there's any other discussion, just need a motion from the CRA board recommending approval or denial of this to the City Commission.
I move approval of resolution number 2022-159.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and with that, we will show it passing unanimously. Close the public hearings, close this meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency, and reconvene the Ormond Beach City Commission meeting at this time. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, and with that, we will show it passing unanimously. Close the public hearings, close this meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency, and reconvene the Ormond Beach City Commission meeting at this time. We're now on the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? If not, I just need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sergeant?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time if any commissioner wishes to comment on any of the consent agenda items, and we'll start with Commissioner Persis.
I just wanted to make a comment about um seven E. I'm very, very pleased that we're getting nine new police vehicles, twenty twenty-three models. I always have said, since I've been a commissioner, I want our police and fire to have the very best, um, best things that they need and, and the top of the line things for their job, and I'm just very happy that we're able to provide this for them.
Great. Anyone else?
I'm just very happy to see the, the subject to, uh, subject to sewer projects going on in Zone Four, that's, that's, I think that's a win-win.
Exciting. Anyone else? All right, well, we'll move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read eight A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-eight, an ordinance amending the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending section two dash seventeen, R dash four, single-family cluster and townhouse zoning district, section two dash eighteen, R dash five, multifamily medium-density zoning district, and section two dash nineteen, R dash six, multifamily medium-high-density zoning district of Article Two, District Regulations of Chapter Two, District and General Regulations, and by amending subsection eighty-four of section two dash fifty-seven, criteria for review of specific conditional and special exceptions of Article Four, Conditional and Special Exception Regulations of Chapter Two, District and General Regulations to amend the dimensional standards and conditional use criteria for townhouses, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-eight, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Planning Director. This is a land development code amendment, there are two parts to it. Uh, one is within the zoning districts of the R four, R five, and R six zoning districts, they allow the townhomes as permitted uses, uh, but when you look at the dimensional standards, they don't fit what a townhouse would be. Um, and as we were looking at, we also looked at the specific conditional use criteria and took the opportunity to add some standards such as setbacks from single-family, additional landscaping, and, uh, so staff uses as a administrative amended in order to clarify the dimensional standards, and then to add some specific standards. The planning board did recommend approval, uh, by seven to zero vote, uh, there were no, uh, individuals who spoke for or against the application. Uh, if approved, it would come back to the commissioners.
Thank you, Steven. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sergeant?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
Eight B.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, District and General Regulations, Article Three, General Regulations, Section Two dash fifty, accessory uses, subsection Z, pools and C.C., screen enclosures, enclosures of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the required rear yard setback for screen enclosures from ten feet to five feet, and by amending the required side yard setback for screen enclosures from seven and one-half feet to five feet, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine, read by title only.
And again, we'll go to Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
This is also a land development code amendment, is to our accessory use to implement the land development code. Um, these standards have been an issue for a number of years, have created the need for many variances. Um, the true issue is for a pool with no screen enclosure, the requirement is five feet to there to ten. For a pool with a screen enclosure, it's ten feet. But if I build my, my pool today at a five-foot setback, I can't put a screen enclosure on it. And I leave the variances, and I leave the frustrated homeowners, and even when staff makes the comment, the, the property settles and, and you have a frustrated property owner. So, the solution that we're proposing is to make both the pool with no screen enclosure and the screen enclosure a five-foot rear yard setback and a five-foot side yard setback. Staff called, uh, both jurisdictions and found five feet to be the common setback. Um, so staff is looking for direction to either amend it or to verify that's what the commission wants as a standard. The planning board, um, did recommend approval seven to zero. There was one, um, couple who spoke in favor of it. They had, um, sought to put a pool and a screen, which had a five-foot setback, they were denied by the Board of Adjustment because in essence they were creating their own hardship, which then led to this land development code.
Thank you, Steven. Let's get a motion and second for discussion, and then we'll go to questions.
Move approval.
Second.
And Commissioner Tallent.
Yeah, so my only comment was, being on the planning board, these last two ordinance came in front of us, and it makes perfect sense when you're, for the, for staff to be able to have consistency and direction, and not every issue have to come through them, it's very staff labor intensive, so I think anything we can do to make planning department more streamlined, I think Harold would probably agree with me, it makes perfect sense.
Agreed. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sergeant?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
Eight D.
Or C?
C.
Eight C.
Hold on a second. You're right, eight C. Thank you.
Eight C. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash forty, an ordinance amending Chapter One, General Administration, Article Two, Administration and Enforcement, Section One dash fourteen, Development Orders and Building Permits of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, by amending the expiration of variances from one year to two years, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash forty, read by title only.
Thank you, and again, Planning Director Stevens Breaker for some brief background. I think it's pretty clear.
Again, a land development code amendment, this is the section fourteen, the sole purpose is to extend a variance development order from one year to two years. Uh, we've seen a lot of property owners struggling with getting contractors, getting material, um, and we've had several variances expire. I believe that this would provide an additional benefit to the district for our seeking variances.
Thank you. Uh, just need a motion and a second.
End of approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sergeant?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
And now eight D.
Yes. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, District and General Regulations, Article Seven, North U.S. Highway One, Interlocal Planning and Municipal Service Area, Division Two, Intolerant Merchant Regulations for Recognized Special Events and Outdoor Entertainment Activity, Temporary Campsites Prohibited, Section D dash eighty-four, Municipal Service Area and Joint Planning Area, Purpose of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. Uh, Steven, did you want to give any background on this one? Okay, just need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sergeant?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we'll close the public hearings, move to first readings, nine A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-two, an ordinance recognizing declarations of a state of emergency in the state of Florida and County of Volusia, including the City of Ormond Beach, as declared by the federal, state, and local governments, declaring a local state of emergency in the City of Ormond Beach, authorizing temporary emergency administrative procedures to provide for the expeditious and coordinated management of building permit applications and fees, waiving specific permits and fees for removal of certain trees, authorizing the issuance of an onsite, of onsite permits for repair of damages caused by Hurricane Nicole, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first and only reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-two, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have any cards.
Move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash four-two?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sergeant?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
Ten A.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one sixty-six, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding Paradise Point Assisted Living Facility located at three five zero Clyde Morris Boulevard within the B dash ten suburban boulevard zoning district, by authorizing a waiver of the wall requirements from a six-foot masonry wall to a six-foot decorative, open aluminum fence, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one sixty-six, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and we'll go again to Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
Again, Stevens Breaker, Planning Director, this is a request for a special exception at three fifty, uh, Clyde Morris Boulevard. Clyde Morris Boulevard is located here on the map, Aberdeen is located to the west, and then Hand Avenue is located along this intersection with Clyde Morris. The Paradise Point Assisted Living Facility was approved by Site Planner Review Committee, it was a permanent use in the zoning, and one of the conditions of the permanent use was the placement of the wall along the boundary interface with Aberdeen. The building is shown in yellow, it is an eighty-seven unit assisted living, um, facility, approximately about seventy-four thousand square feet, three stories in height. Um, during the construction, the property owner sought a wall waiver, um, so our land development code requires a wall. Our land development code also allows the ability to waive a wall through a public hearing process, um, through the planning board's recommendation and the city commission action. So, the request was to leave the existing natural buffer of thirty-seven feet, transitions to twenty-six feet along the Stormwater Pond, and then to put a black aluminum decorative fence to the rear to provide the security. Uh, one of the things that was stated in the planning board is that in order to install the masonry wall required here, it would require approximately ten feet of landscaping to be removed, they would still meet their buffer, but it would have an impact. After the planning board, there was, um, this is an aerial showing Aberdeen and the interface of Paradise Point, and then here is another aerial showing the interface. Any gaps in the landscaping of the buffer, uh, for example, there was a sewer connection that was done at this location, would be required to be filled in either scenario, either with a wall, without the wall, they'll have to, um, provide landscaping for any gaps in the wall. The discussion of the planning board focused on the appropriateness of the wall versus the aluminum decorative style. Planning board recommended denial of the application with a six-to-one vote. They also had direction that the applicant should meet and get additional input from the Aberdeen residents. Um, the applicant, I believe, held a neighborhood meeting, walked the site, in your packet there were, um, letters of, of support and, and non-support, so they came up with nineteen area, nineteen residents who supported it. They're shown with the green stars along the property boundary interface, and then there were three property owners who did not support it, was shown in the red X. So the current, um, input that has been received was nineteen, four, and three against. At the planning board, I recall, there was, um, two people who spoke against and two people who spoke for it. So, again, the planning board recommended denial by a six-to-one vote, and the applicant is here to address the question.
Thank you, Steven. I have, uh, several cards, and we'll start, including the applicants, but we'll start with, uh, Sandy, is it Dunbar? Do it. If you'll let us know your last name, I'm sorry.
My last name, Devlin.
Devlin, thank you.
And I wasn't here when they did the, all the stars, or there'd be another star positive for the fence to be changed. Um, I live at one twenty-five Green Forest, which is directly behind. It would be so much nicer to have the open fence and the landscaping and the growth that we have there now versus having an ugly concrete wall that kind of looks like a prison wall. Um, you just need a little wire on top. Uh, it would be beautiful to have it open, I think it would be a benefit for us on the Aberdeen side as well as the people in the facility, because it would be so much nicer to look at. And I'd really appreciate it if you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim? Is it McGuire?
Good evening. My name is Tim McGuire. I am the regional vice president representing Mirx Properties, which is the actual owner of the Aberdeen. Uh, we've had numerous discussions with our residents, as well as, uh, an invite that the owners had put on from Paradise, and we feel that the, uh, structure of the fence is adequate, it's really nice looking. Um, we've walked the property, and there's over five hundred and some odd homes that we have in the community. This fence only affects twelve homes in the entire community. So we strongly support the recommendation of the fence, and we would be happy to answer any questions on, um, why we feel so strong about that. Again, like the previous president just mentioned, that it just looks better. Um, with the landscaping being done, we've met with them, we've seen their drawings of what they're proposing, and as the representative of Mirx were in total support of that, and we would hope to get the vote that they could proceed with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlinda Copeland?
Hi, I'm Darlinda Copeland, I'm a resident of Ormond Beach, and also I am CEO and the owner of Paradise Point. Um, I have been in the healthcare industry for all of my life, and have served the residents of Ormond Beach communities since nineteen ninety-five. Um, I really am very, um, involved in what goes on in this community, and I have a life offering event in my family that caused me to leave healthcare as far as the hospital business, because I needed to do something different for my parents. And so I started looking at assisted living facilities around town, and I saw that we need to do something different, something better for our parents, because they deserve more. And so I set out on this venture, quit everything I had done, put all my money, all of my time, all of my resources in this project. I met with John Adams and said, I want property in Ormond Beach. I don't want to be in Daytona, I don't want to be in Port Orange, I want to be in Ormond Beach because this is my home. So we found the property on Clyde Morris, had it rezoned, um, Steve Breaker has been amazing to work with, I like to say. And so at that point in time, I went out to our community physicians and community leaders that every single one of you know. I have twenty-six investors in my project, we are all local to Volusia County or to Flagler County, and we are all, almost all of us in the healthcare business. We're building this facility to do what's right for residents of Ormond Beach, we're not a huge corporation that came in from outside of our county, just because we know there's old people here that can be made money off of. We're here because we care about our residents. We also care about the residents in Aberdeen. So when we started this project, we tried very hard not to disrupt their lives with construction, which is, you know, pretty difficult. And we went through that process, and part of that process was really to assess that boundary. I picked that property because of the beautiful trees. There's a lot of wetlands on that property. It's not enclosed like other facilities with concrete so that our residents can be outside. All the evidence-based studies show that nature and sunshine is good for healing and for positive outlooks. So we want to keep as much of nature as we can for our residents and also for our neighbors. So in order to be a good neighbor, what we're doing and what we're proposing is instead of having to have them have an ugly concrete wall right in their backyards, we are actually moving the fence to our side of the tree buffer, giving up that property, so to speak, in order to put up this decorative aluminum fence that will be on our side so that we are not destroying any more trees for them. They still can enjoy beautiful nature, and our residents can also enjoy it. It's something that we propose. We've talked with our neighbors, trying to be good neighbors with Aberdeen, and again with the residents that live right behind our facility. So we appreciate you looking at this exemption. We know it was kind of a rushed subject, and it happened very close to the last planning board, and so we didn't have time to go and do the neighborhood meeting, which we've now done, and had lots of conversations with the neighbors there. So our commitment to the neighbors I've spoken to is we will upkeep that fence, even though it's on our side, they won't see it. We will upkeep the trees and the landscaping hereon out because we want a beautiful environment for everyone. So we appreciate your consideration and your time because this topic has taken up a lot of time from the city council and planning board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlinda. Robert Harlow.
Congratulations. You all got elected. You may not like it so much. I'm going to be blunt and to the point on a lot of things. I want to address, I went to the planning board as well, and I want to address the points that they brought up, so I'm going to go bang, bang, bang. First, they said this is between a commercial and residential property. I disagree. Paradise Point is a residential facility. So is Aberdeen. It's a residential facility. If they're both there to make money, let's face it. Bottom line is, they didn't pay the top dollar for that so they could go broke. I live at 119 Green Forest. I'm looking out the back, and if I look where the stakes are that the surveyors put in as to where the concrete wall would be, it's twenty-two feet off my back step, six-foot concrete wall. How many of you would like to see that? Not me. Totally opposed to that. This is a request for an exception, not the rule. We don't want to change the rule. This fence is going to be in a place where you can't see it from the street, you can't see it from anywhere but the twelve houses on Green Forest and Paradise Point. That's the only place you're going to see this fence. And if they're forced to put in the concrete wall, they'll have to take out twelve to fourteen feet of green trees. It'll go away just so they can maintain the wall on both sides. So that, if you look at the picture again, you'll see that there is twenty feet there. You take out ten, you get ten, and it's going to be spares. And Ms. Copeland has done everything in her power to be a good neighbor and provide us with a buffer and her with a decorative fence, and I think this is a win-win solution for both people. And it's rare to find that these days. If you've got the owner of two properties and the residents in both properties all saying yes, but the planning commission said, "No, we have a rule," and they put their thumb down on us, I just think that's a little over the top. Aberdeen does not have a fence all the way around it, which one lady said from Cypress. The new apartments were built on Williamson. There's a pond between the two. I don't want to blow up when that clock hits zero. So there's not a fence over there, it's just a lake. That's it. That's all there is for a barrier there. Let me see, what am I missing?
I think you covered everything.
I think that's about it. But yeah, so do I want a fence back there? Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then Mark Dous for the applicant. Mark, I saved you for last, just in case there were any questions you needed to follow along.
Well, actually, everyone spoke, pretty much said it all, but I did want to make a couple of points. My name is Mark Dous, 536 North Halifax. When we came to the planning board, I think we really weren't prepared. It was rushed, we didn't have a chance to get the neighborhood meeting down, so honestly, the planning board didn't have what you have today. I mean, now we know pretty much all the residents have been pulled next to the wall, and we know how they feel, and I think that makes a big difference. Through the design of this project, the whole theme was trees, trees, trees. I mean, that's why, instead of the back, instead of having a twenty-foot buffer, we have a thirty-seven foot buffer. And so it's all down to the trees, trying to make the neighbors happy. I hope you support their wishes, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Any questions for Mark? And then, thank you, Mark. During the discussion, if anything comes up, we'll call you back up, but just need a motion, and the motion is going to need to be a little different than what's included in the resolution, depending on what you want, whether you want the fence or the wall, and Randy can help us with that if need be.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the application with the fence, but I would like to discuss it.
Second. Moved and seconded, and since it's your zone and your motion, Deputy Mayor Brierley, we'll start with you.
Well, there were two of us that are currently up here that were on the planning board that saw this project come before us, and yes, I was one of the people that voted no because I wanted a wall for several reasons. One is that we do require a wall between the commercial or residential property. I prefer the wall because of maintenance. Typically, the masonry wall, you just go out, pressure wash it, paint it every once in a while, and you don't have a problem, but with a fence, you're open for a little bit more maintenance, more problems. However, with that being said, we did ask the applicant to go back and have a neighborhood meeting and get community buy-in, and that's exactly what you did. So if that's what the neighbors want, and the applicant is obviously happy to do that, I'll be in favor of the fence. I don't like to, we go against our code, but again, there is an allowance for a wall waiver. I would put in, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. One, that because of the concern of the maintenance, that, you know, we require that it be maintained because even with aluminum, you can get oxidation, requires some paint, some repair. But I also see in our staff report that the universal top fence that you're looking at is available in three grades, independence premium, independence plus, and independence. And it appears that the independence model has been chosen. I would prefer to see the independence premium because typically, I think if you're looking at independence premium, you're looking at a more quality product and one that will probably require less maintenance in the future. I think it's the same products, it's just maybe how it's treated, how it's coated, what have you, but I think it would just be a better, you know, if we want to allow the wall waiver, at least let's require them to put in the best old fence we can get.
Commissioner Sargent.
So on 108 is where my mom resides, just for the record, and I also spoke to Dr. Savigny this morning, and for consistency purposes, I like the wall. I think it's the code, and that's what we need. However, after looking at it and reviewing it and seeing what the applicant has given up and how much trees are going to be saved, in this project, if you drive down Clyde Morris, you almost don't even see it. It sits back, there's so many trees that have been preserved on this property. I think it's with the residents obviously wanting it, I am for this.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes, when I saw all the hard work, Darlinda, I just want to compliment you, everything you've done to make that area look absolutely fantastic. You know, you're doing something that's going to make Ormond Beach look better, and I believe with this aluminum fence, and I agree with Deputy Mayor Brierley, we need to get a really good aluminum fence, but I think, you know, it's the quality and what you're doing and what we need to have for Ormond Beach. I'm sold because we're getting thirty-seven feet of buffer with the aluminum fence, more trees, more green, I'm all for that. It's definitely more attractive than a wall. A wall is hard, it just, I don't know, it just seems to turn people off when you just have a big hard wall there, and the residents want it. I mean, overwhelmingly, the residents want it, so I will be a yes vote.
Commissioner Talland.
Yeah, so Harold did explain a little bit of the history of us being on the planning board at the time, and I was definitely against the waiver because I am, I believe in keeping our land code consistent, but we do do special exceptions for certain reasons, and I do appreciate, Mr. Dous, that you verbalized that you probably weren't as prepared with the neighbors as you could have been, and I think that would have avoided a little bit of issues. So I really applaud you for going back to the neighbors and getting that information to us as now commissioner, so I appreciate that. Couple comments, too. I do respect the fact that they have made a big effort in preserving wetlands, particularly on the front, and I like Commissioner Persis, appreciate the trees and the wetlands, so I am very pleased with that. And one of the other reasons why we had denied it was because of the maintenance issue and possibly the safety of the fence falling. So I do agree with Harold, if we could put some type of stipulations in there with the maintenance being upon the applicant and also a higher grade or a premium-type fence, I think that makes perfect sense. Let's see. Buffer, I'm really pleased with as well, so when we do come down to this, oh, with the wall, concrete wall being between business and residence, that makes perfect sense, but this is really almost resident against resident, and it's just not the same even though it is, you know, coded as a business. So for all of those reasons, I don't have a problem with the aluminum fence. I think seeing those trees, I'd much rather see those in aluminum fence than I want a concrete wall.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Randy, we had a motion to approve the application, and then Deputy Mayor Brierley brought up a couple specifics, one being the specific type of fence, and the other that the, either the applicant or the property owner be required to maintain it. How do you want to handle that? Do you have a motion to amend?
Motion to amend to include those two conditions, and then you can vote on the motion to amend, excuse me, and then you can vote on the underlying motion after you amend.
So Deputy Mayor Brierley, are you going to make the motion?
Yes, I would motion to amend that we require the highest-grade independence premium fence be allowed and that the property owner, because the applicant, I mean, I don't think she will, but, you know, sometimes a property could be sold twenty years from now. Right, so the property owner will be responsible for the maintenance at all times with that.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and any further discussion on that? We'll call the vote on that, and then we'll call the, call the vote on the overall motion to approve. Any other discussion on those two amendments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and now ten A as amended.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. We'll move to ten B.
Resolution number 2022-167, a resolution declaring the intention of the Ormond Beach City Commission to consider vacating a portion of West Street, a platted public right-of-way lying west of 363 Putnam Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4240-03-08-0150, establishing a time certain for a public hearing and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-167, read by title only.
Thank you, and again, I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this item.
This item is a right-of-way vacation. A right-of-way vacation occurs in a two-step process. The first step, which is before you tonight, is a notice of intent. So basically, that allows people to know there's an intention to vacate a right-of-way. Right-of-way that's being sought to be vacated is a portion of West Street abutting 363 Putnam Avenue, as shown here kind of in this yellow hatch. It's also provided on a survey. If approved tonight, what would happen is in January tenth, there would be an ordinance presented to the city commission. The advertisement for the right-of-way vacation takes the entire resolution and does a newspaper ad, so it's a fairly extensive advertising. This item has been reviewed by the Site Planner Review Committee, the technical committee that reviews development applications, including our public works, and we are fine with the right-of-way vacation. There would be a drainage access and maintenance easement that would be retained by the city. Staff is available for any question, and the applicant is also here if you have any questions of the applicant. Staff is recommending approval. Again, the commission dates for the ordinance would be January tenth and January twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Stevens, and I do have a card from Megan Ford.
I'm a property owner for 363 Putnam Avenue, and we bought this property because it's gorgeous, right on the water, with the intent of eventually putting it off on this property. We have unfortunately seen our house flooded twice in the last two storms, so we are aware that we are the, you know, the lying issue to that whole Putnam Avenue area. So anything we can do for flood prevention, but we'd also like to get a dock as well. So we worked with this committee meeting and came up with giving them an easement as well, so that way they can work on future flood prevention. So I'm open for any questions.
Great. I think it's pretty straightforward, but does anybody have any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only card I had. I just need a motion.
I move approval of resolution number 2022-167.
Second.
Any discussion? Stevens, I just wanted to point out, I love the map of Ormond Terrace Annex that's in our packet from nineteen twenty-six.
It's pretty cool.
I think it is pretty cool, yep. And I'd love to see that printed in the Ormond Observer for people just to see what we're talking about, how things used to be a hundred years ago. Anyway, if there's no other discussion, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will go to reports, suggestions, and requests, starting tonight with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that Home for the Holidays Parade is this weekend, December tenth. There's a 5:30 reception at City Hall, the tree lighting at six, 6:05 at start, parade lineup, and then the parade begins at 6:30 PM. This is likely a very popular event like it was last year, so we are looking forward to a great time. PD Promotional Ceremony will be on December thirteenth at 11:00 AM in the training room. We have John Boisner going to lieutenant, Ray Lines going to sergeant, Ryan Mahalco going to sergeant, Rhett Summerlad going to corporal, Carlos Ortiz going to corporal, and Katie Dario as evidence custodian. So really excited about that. If you can make it, please put December thirteenth and 11:00 AM on your calendar. Another great event is the PAL Holiday Party. It's a walk-through event on December seventeenth from 5:30 to 7:30 at the South Orleans Neighborhood Center. The children will come for various ages between 5:30 and 7:00 PM, and I think we still provide snacks or dinner for them. Is that right, Chief? Like pizza and that kind of stuff. And then each child gets a gift, so it's a really wonderful time. And then lastly, December fifteenth is Holiday at the Casings. That is 6:00 PM house tour, 6:30 dessert social, and 7 o'clock holiday concert. So lots of wonderful holiday activities, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Thanks, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Sargent.
Trying to keep it brief. First, congratulations to Joyce for being named Public Sector Woman of the Year by the Daytona of the Year by the Daytona Beach News Journal Women in Business. I know you don't like public recognition, but well deserved. Thank you, the residents, for allowing me the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities that occurred in Kansas. One of my takeaway from the event was how important the digital platform is for the cities to create better transparency. And some of the enhancements I think that our city needs are updated microphones when you try to listen online. It's very hard to hear at home. Updated website, more user-friendly. If you want to listen to a meeting at home, it takes about five clicks, if you're lucky, to figure out where to go. New Smyrna Beach, it's one click. It's a flash on the front, which is very interactive. I think we can step it up. There's clicks on the website, like where it says, click on Green Ormond Beach tab. There's nothing there. The last airport newsletter was 2017. You get my point. It's just, I think we can do better with our digital platform. I've received several calls about flags that are flying at businesses. There's one at the corner here at the gas station advertising CBD. I know we relaxed these requirements, I believe, during COVID, but I think it might be time to start tightening things back up. And with that, thank you to everyone. I hope everyone has a safe and happy holidays. Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll go to Commissioner Persis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. I was, I also went to Kansas City, Missouri with, actually, we all went. And we had such a great time. And with, you know, new commission and all of us working together, it was a great bonding time, and I really enjoyed it. One of my takeaways was I attended some sessions on cybersecurity. I know something happened recently, and I don't exactly remember where, but I think the electricity, like, the whole town went out, or someone hacked it. I can't remember what it was. And then something happened somewhere with, they're tampering with the water supply. So those kind of things, you know, I know that the city is always aware of, and I totally know we've got that, you know. They're looking, we're looking at that. But just something that we need to really be cognizant of. I'm always worried about safety, but there were some sessions about that that I really enjoyed. I was fortunate to attend the swearing-in of three new police officers about a couple of weeks ago. And I always love hearing the chief speak to them and their families and letting them know what the expectations are. It's just such a wonderful ceremony to see the new police officers getting pinned and have their families there. It's just a wonderful experience. Also, I attended the tree lighting in Rockefeller Gardens last weekend. It was beautiful. The whole, John D. Rockefeller's house is all lit up, and the trees there are beautiful. There's a band out singing, and it really kind of rang in the holidays for me. I just loved it. And I'm looking forward to the parade on Saturday. It's going to be fun. I wanted to end with this. I know we had, in Ormond Beach, I guess it was a week or so ago, maybe 10 days ago, there was someone that was stabbed near City Hall. And I wondered, and I talked to City Manager about it, you know, did you lock down? What did you do? And I don't know that there is a lockdown procedure per se for City Hall. And I think because this is such a prominent building, it would be a place, if somebody wanted to do something unpleasant, they might want to choose this place. And so I'd like to maybe recommend to staff and recommend to maybe get the other commissioners' approval of maybe looking at, you know, updating City Hall with a security system, with a way to lock down, a way, you know, lock every door, a way for everyone to be safe in case something should happen. I don't think it would, but we just don't know. And I think safety is one of my number-one things that I'm always looking at. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and maybe we could see what we could come up with in doing something for, you know, everybody that works here, you know, whether it's at the water plant, wherever it is where Robert Carolyn works. We need to have security. We need to be able to lock down all these places. So I think that's something that's going to be on my agenda for the new year. And with that, I hope everybody has a safe and wonderful holiday. Please be safe and enjoy all your festivities. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say it was a great trip out to Kansas City, Missouri, the National League of Cities Center. We did learn a lot. We got to kind of, you know, bond as a new commission, and I think it was great. One of the things, one of the sessions I went to out there, and I think a lot of the rest of us did as well, was the session on misinformation and disinformation, which was kind of disorganized. But nonetheless, I think that was one of the more interesting ones. I also attended some of the ones that dealt with public works, since that's kind of like my wheelhouse, and found some of those, you know. It's interesting, you go to some of these sessions, if the National League of Cities, and you realize how far ahead Ormond Beach is. You know, we're ahead of the curve on some of these things, and it's kind of refreshing to come out there and say, you know what, we're doing it right. So that was a lot of what I took away from Kansas City. We got back, and the mayor signed me up, followed, told me I needed to go to the Florida League of Mayors Conference in Kissimmee, and I did. And basically, what their focus was, was the do's and don'ts of social media. And without getting to a lot of detail, I will say that we are so fortunate to have Jen Elston doing our social media for us, because a lot of the problems that I heard, a lot of the issues that I heard in that conference, we have someone who can take care of that. So that was very, that was very satisfying. I do want to say one thing. I want to congratulate one of our own, Ormond Beach's own, Dr. Frank Farmer. Today was Dr. Frank Farmer Day in Malusia County. And Frank was, a lot of folks may not know Frank Farmer was the first Surgeon General for the state of Florida. And it was well deserved, and he was recognized today by the Malusia County Council. So congratulations to him. I look forward as well to the Christmas Parade on Saturday, and want to wish everyone a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Talland?
All right. Well, I, too, wanted to thank the city and the residents for allowing me to attend the conference in Kansas City. It was a great team-building experience, a lot of fun, a lot of interesting topics that were pertinent to small cities like us that I'll be sharing in the future. I did learn, and Harold, you said exactly what I was going to say, the one thing I did learn is that our city is well ahead of so many cities. And you just don't realize how good we have it in this city until you go to these meetings and you hear their problems. The takeaway for me, and I hope to try to figure out how we can implement some things in our town, is the mental wellness factor and the problems with addictions. So that will segue into, I wish the Easy Does It folks were here, because I hope there's something we can do to help them. My personal story is, my son is ten years, over ten years, recovered addict. And Easy Does It was the club, his home club. And they were such, and it's surprising that they came forward because it's anonymous, you know, you're not even supposed to talk about it. But, so for them to come up and ask for help, I think, is big. And mental wellness addiction is very dear to my heart. And I think if we can do anything to help children, adults, anybody at any age with any mental wellness issue, I would like to see that. Anyway, I also attended the Legislative Conference in Kissimmee the second day that Harold did. I learned that I will never go to a conference without a colleague, because it's really boring in between sessions, and you don't have anybody to talk to. But I was a sponge. I learned a lot. I attended, believe it or not, Stevens, the Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Seems to be, that's where my heart goes every time. And they have crafted two bills that will be presented in tally. One will be addressing impact fees with alternate and traditional modes of transportation, which is definitely well-needed. And the other is an infill redevelopment bill, which is also something that our city will personally be affected by. I'm looking forward to the Holiday Parade. I would, I know that we've talked, I personally have let, talked to Randy and Joyce about the aggressive dog issue. It really does seem to be very prominent in our town. And I know our hands are tied with a lot of state legislature. I hope that we can open that up and just readdress it and see what we can do as a city to help our residents. And with that, I want to wish everyone a very blessed holiday season and safe travels.
Thank you, Commissioner Talland. And I, too, attended, along with pretty much all of you, the 44th Annual Holiday Gala and Christmas Tree Lighting at the Casements on Friday night. A wonderful event. A huge crowd, standing room only, hardly parking room for everybody that was there. But lots of excitement, lots of smiling faces, and really just an incredible job that our volunteers at the guild do for our city and for their love of that historic building, the Casements. Also, yesterday, had the opportunity to welcome, along with Ormond Main Street and local officials and staff, the Secretary of State for the state of Florida, Cord Byrd. He was in town. Obviously, the Main Street program falls under his office's jurisdiction, and so he was in town to visit with us. He had heard about a lot of the positive things happening in Ormond Beach from the statewide executive director of the Main Street program. And so it really was wonderful to host him on a tour of several area businesses and to listen to the testimonies and passion of our local business folks who really love Ormond Beach and have an incredible entrepreneurial spirit. They love our history. They love where they're at, our geography and our natural beauty of our area. And it was just inspiring to go business to business and hear each one of their stories and why, how they found Ormond Beach, how they fell in love with Ormond Beach, why they love Ormond Beach. And I think the secretary was truly impressed. He's from up in the Jacksonville area originally, has been all over the state, but he did seem truly impressed. And then, you know, finishing up the day, I had to leave to get back to my other work, but he finished up the day with some fried chicken from Rosevilla. That's not a bad way to end a visit in our city. So a lot of positive stories, a lot of pictures, which I posted on Facebook, and just a great opportunity to have the Secretary of State for the entire state and his staff here, seeing how our Main Street program operates. And we hold that program up as a model for really any Main Street in the state of Florida. We follow the statute. We don't get crazy with things. We do it the right way. And so I've always been very proud of Main Street and their citizen volunteers, who really provide a huge, huge value to the city of Ormond Beach. So with all that, thank you all for everything you added tonight, and we'll wish everyone a happy holidays. The Christmas Parade will be fantastic, and looking forward to that. And we'll see you all there. Good night. We're adjourned.